I'm going to go ahead and call this meeting to order at 6:00 PM. This is a joint meeting with the Planning Commission for Tuesday, March 11th, 2025. Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
I am not expecting Assemblymember McKee, but Tim Hale, do we have you on the phone? Stephanie Nowers?
Here.
Maxwell Sumner?
Here.
Bill Gamble?
Here.
Dmitry Fonov?
Here.
Ron Bernier?
Present.
And for the Planning Commission, we are not expecting Doug Lynn or Michael Collins. But Richard Allen?
Here.
CJ Cohn?
Here.
Lynn McCabe?
Here.
Wilfred Fernandez?
Here.
Kurt Scoggan?
Here.
Madam Mayor, I believe we have a quorum of both bodies.
Okay, thank you. Are there any changes to?
Are there any changes to the agenda?
Okay, seeing none, then the agenda is approved as presented. If you all stand and chair. Woman CJ Cohn, will you lead us in the?
Yes. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do we have a sign up sheet? We don't, we don't have anybody here to do the sign up sheet, I guess, huh? Or do we have one? Okay. So our next item on our agenda is audience participation, and we'll check to see if we have a sign up sheet. We'll take the people that have signed up first, and then we will open it up to anybody that is present or online. Thank you, sir. Okay, the first one, Ron? You'll need to turn the mic on, sir.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and the Assembly and Planning Commission. Three things real quickly tonight. Number one, I'd just like to express appreciation for what I'm seeing as an improved outreach effort to involve the community councils in some of the important planning efforts that are happening in the borough. We believe that it's certainly been a value-added benefit to our residents, and we hope that it's been a kind of reciprocal in terms of adding value to some of the plans that you all are working on. Three examples here just recently, you know, in the last year, certainly the Bogart-Selden Access Management Plan, which you'll hear more about tonight. We were able to get involved early in that, and we believe our input was, was value-added, and glad to see some of the recommendations we made are reflected now in the plan. Safe Streets for All, I know it's not on your agenda tonight, but we had significant involvement and input to that plan as well. And then maybe a slightly different example, but we do feel the outreach, early outreach, and kind of the collaborative effort we went through on the conditional use permit for central gravel was value-added for the community members as well as for the, you know, for the Planning Commission that was making ultimate decisions. And so we just encourage a similar strategy when it comes to actually execution of the projects that are contemplated in these plans. I know we've written letters and will continue to advocate for early involvement in the projects as well. We would like to have a seat at the table early on in project scoping, alternatives analysis, preliminary engineering, you know, rather than waiting to get involved after there's something already been, not set in stone, but, you know, significantly engineered. Second thing I'd like to mention is, you know, specific support to the Bogart-Selden Corridor Access Management Plan, which we'll hear more about tonight, and to the recommendations and resolution that's coming forward here soon to you on the Water Body Setback Advisory Board. We've been involved in both of those efforts, and, and we support what they're bringing forward for decision-makers. The last thing I want to mention is really just, we'd like to propose a change in, in the joint meetings that you're having like this one tonight, as well as with the Planning Commission, to kind of model what's being done on the regular assembly meetings where you have two opportunities for, for audience participation. We think that really adds a lot of value, and would like to see that happen in these forums and with the Planning Commission. My understanding is it actually takes, takes one of you to kind of sponsor those things on both, in both entities to make it happen, but we'd like to, like to see that happen. That's all. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, to change the agenda for joint meetings, we would have to do a code change, because what the code says now is what we have on the agenda for tonight, so, yeah. Ready?
Madam Mayor and CJ Cohn, the Planning Commission, thank you so much for allowing me to speak. I concur and support everything you, Ron, just said, because that has a direct impact on me and my church, me, I, my church and I. We were looking at building a church off of Bogart, and for 20 years, I've been looking at Bogart, trying to get it, looking at the mess. That's all I say, it's a mess. So the church, we're looking at off the spruce, off Church Road, one or two. That being said, really appreciate the opportunity that you look at this, and we really want to take a hard look and correct everything on Bogart. The reason why I was kind of late, I and my friend who drove me here, massive accident on Selden in Bogart. Seven police cars, two power trucks, and one, and two other police support people. It happens quite frequently there. I can say, please look at this and change, because I know the direct impact, which I and Ron did not have too much input on, was the central gravel thing. I agree with what Ron just said. Give us more heads up and more discussion in the gravel pit, because I cannot express to you how much I have a disdain for that being there. But I understand it was already approved and went through without us really giving too much discussion on that. Either yes or no, it was also yes. That being said, thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, sir. Okay, Daniel Porter?
Good evening. My name is Daniel Potter. I live in RSA 19. Some of you have probably seen me before when I was here with photos of poor road maintenance. At 4:50 PM this afternoon, I sent out an email to the mayor and every news agency that I could potentially come up with, because I've come here, I've shown pictures, I've talked to the Road Service Advisory Board. In this email, it details how I received, I requested public records for my RSA, then compared them to actual photos and videos I have taken. Based off the O and M documentation I received, I have the following issues. For reference, my RSA is approximately 14 miles, and the contractor gets paid $14,000 per month. Just to abbreviate this for time, in January, all roads were sanded. On the 6th and 7th of January, I have photographic evidence of numerous roads that are not sanded and are dangerous. In December, the contractor only logged nine days of work for the entire month, and other complaints, not me, indicate a motor vehicle slid off the road due to poor maintenance. In February, this past month, there is one day of work by that road contractor. In Borough Records, one day of work, they got $14,000. In 1972, the State of Alaska v Abbott, the Alaska Supreme Court stated that operational negligence, especially where procedural standards, which is the RSA Project Manual, are in place, reaches the duty of care owed to the public. When you hear about accidents like that, gentlemen, a majority of them are from poor traction control, which is contractors not doing their jobs. My phone number's on here, my email's on here. Hopefully, some reporter, or the mayor, or someone will explain to me why these roads aren't being maintained up to contract, and why we have a contractor working one day out of an entire month and getting $14,000. Think about Planning Committee. If our current roads are being maintained this poorly, that, that is affects your plans for your roads you're going to build, what money or how are those going to be maintained when our current roads are this poorly maintained?
Thank you. It's nice to see you again back over here.
Hi, Adam Bradway. I'm B-R-A-D-W-A-Y. I'm the transportation planner for Alaska DOT for sort of the core area of the Matsui. I'm here tonight just to generally lend support to the planning process for the Bogart-Selden Corridor Access Management Plan. The DOT has been heavily involved in this planning process, and in general, really support the idea of access management along our shared corridor, because DOT has half and you all have half, roughly. It's one of the fastest-growing corridors in probably the state. You know, we're looking at probably that amount of traffic doubling in the next 20 years or so. So anything we can do to reduce the amount of accidents and improve the mobility of that corridor, as obviously the Matsui is still growing, so, yeah, just here to say good job to the planning team. The amount of public outreach will really support our efforts along the corridor as well, and I think that it's a good product and you should move forward. So, thank you.
Thanks, Adam. That was all of the people that signed up. Is there anyone else that would like to add?
Yes, my name, excuse me, my name is Patty Fisher. I'm a resident of Meadow Lakes. I want to express my deep appreciation to the Water Body Setback Board. They worked hard for over a year with a very difficult subject. I attended the meeting, meetings a number of times whenever I could. The setback is a critical-ish subject issue in my community council area, and I appreciate the depth to which the advisory board went to consider all the various issues involved in, in this very difficult subject. They deserve a formal commendation. I don't know whether they could get a badge or something, but they did, they did, they did an excellent job. They voted on everything, and they, they, they didn't hesitate to deal with a really difficult subject. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else that would like to address the Assembly? Do we have anybody online, sir? We do not? Okay, so I'll go ahead and close audience participation. The joint items of business that we have, the first one is the overview of planning projects. We have reached this item, and the first item is, do we have a presentation? And we do. All righty, sir, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Alex Strawn, Planning and Land Use Director for the Matsui Borough, members of the Commission, members of the Assembly. So, let's see, so, I'm going to give just an overview of the planning projects, and then we're going to dive into two of the planning projects that we have. One is the Corridor Access Management Plan, and then the other is the, the Water Body Setbacks. And so I will say, this is not an exhaustive list. We are working on a lot of different things in the planning department, but this is sort of the big ones that we're working on. And I don't have very many slides, so I was hoping to really just kind of touch on every one of these briefly, and welcome interjections and questions and, and things like that as we go. So Sub Area Solutions Studies is a study that we've been really working on for the past couple of years using federal dollars, and it looked, it looks at four different areas in the borough, and talks about transportation solutions and maybe land use solutions to help the mobility of traffic in those areas. One of those areas was the Bogart-Selden Corridor, and we realized that this is a big deal, and it kind of morphed into its own project. But that is one area in these four different areas that we're studying through the Sub Area Solutions Studies. We do anticipate that we're going to wrap that project up in the next couple of months and probably bring it to the Assembly and Planning Commission sometime this fall or towards the end of the year. And I'm just going to keep going unless somebody raises their hand. Fuller Lake Management Plan is a, you know, like all management plans, it is a sort of grassroots effort to put regulations on a water body. I believe that they, they've met several times, they have taken an initial vote on how to go on a particular issue, they have a draft plan, and now they're going to vote one last time on whether they want to actually bring the plan forward or not. If they get the enough votes, then it will go forward to the Planning Commission and Assembly. Transit, you have been briefed on a lot, so I'm not going to spend too much time on that. Historic Preservation Plan update. So our last historic preservation plan was updated back in the eighties. It's becoming sort of a historic document of its own. It is necessary for us to have a historic preservation plan in order to be what's called a certified local government. There's many benefits that come with becoming, with being a certified local government. We can obtain grants that we wouldn't otherwise be able to get, or community members can obtain grants, we can, we can have historic landmarks, and it's, it's really an outdated study, and this is, I believe, also federal dollars that is paying for this study, and we, there's been, it's changed hands several times. In fact, Adam Bradway, I think, worked on it at one point, and it's been many different planners that have worked on this, and so we're trying to take everything that's been done, wrap it up, and, and bring it forward, so that should be also coming to you this fall. Very likely, you'll, you'll be able to see that, that draft, and we'll run it through the, the process. Community cleanup, everybody think is up to date on that one. I guess for the Planning Commissioners, I haven't kept them as up to date, but we're, we're doing a lot of cleanup on private property. We're partnering with nonprofit organizations to actually go onto private property where we have open code violations. We don't think that they're, they're generally pretty egregious. We don't think they're going to actually, once we clean it up, it's going to come back. And we're really getting, seeing a lot of progress on some of our more blighted properties and getting those cleaned up. I put enterprise software update on here. It's really an IT project, but it is very, very time-consuming for our, our permit staff. We're migrating all of our data, we're testing, we're, we're taking our processes, making sure we're not sort of paving the cow path, so to speak. We're, we're making sure our processes are really clean so that when we tailor the, the software to our processes, it's a good, clean process. But it's going to be a great thing for our efficiency and for the, the public's experience when they actually apply for permits. I was getting a sneak preview of what it's going to look like, and it's going to be pretty cool. It's going to really simplify, if you want to do business with the boroughs, going to give you a very intuitive way to figure out how to get to the webpage that you need to get to and, and apply online. The Official Streets and Highways Plan is something that was updated a few years, few years back. Unfortunately, we did not have the best model for our area to, to do that. We, it's still a useful plan for us, but we, the State of Alaska has been working with the contractor to develop a new model, so it's an engineering model that can take in real-life data, plug it into our road system, and show if you were to make a change, for instance, like add a new road, how that would affect the rest of the road system, or if you're to upgrade an intersection or whatever it may be. So we, once we have that model up and running, then we hope to do an, an update of the Official Streets and Highways Plan. So that's probably a more of a two- or three-year outlook, but that is something that we are looking forward to doing. I threw Fish and Wildlife Commission on there just because they do take up a lot of our time. Nearly, nearly half of a regular full-time staff member spent doing, dealing with that board. It's a very important board, and they, they have a lot, they're digging into a lot of things, but there's a lot of research and a lot of support that goes into supporting that board. The Alaska Clean Water Actions Grant, otherwise known as the Aqua Grant. So when, when we had the 2020 census, several different federal processes were initiated because we're known as an urbanized area, one of which is the, what's known as MS4, the Municipal Separate Stormwater Systems, which is an unfunded mandate that requires us to do a, a better job of managing our stormwater. This, the, the Assembly adopted a resolution requesting that we be exempt for another decade because we fit into a certain category that, that could exempt us. We have, I forward that to the DEC, I have not heard back from them, I've prodded them, but they have not given us a decision on that, but considering that we're halfway through the decade, we'll probably not be required to do the MS4 requirements. However, in the letter that I sent to them, I said, hey, we're working on several different things so that when 2030 comes around, we're going to be ready for that, for that letter from the DEC. One, so this is part of that effort. We're doing multiple things to do a better job of managing our stormwater, but this, this Aqua Grant gives us money to reach out to private property owners who own land adjacent to impaired water bodies, and educates them on best practices to essentially manage non, non-point source pollution, so prevent pollution from entering the waterways. I'm just going to keep going here. So South Kinnick River Community Council, Special Use District, many of you may recall, there is a resolution that was passed directing staff to work with the South, South Kinnick River Community Council on a special use district. We do have legislation coming forward that would actually kill that effort, and, and the reason for that is that the South Kinnick River Community Council voted recently to end that process. They do not want to go for the spud, so that, I believe, is on March 18th Consent Agenda.
Can I stop you right there?
Yes.
Facebook quote, okay? It's my, what I read on Facebook regarding that is that there is a group, there is It's my, what I read on Facebook regarding that is that there is a group that is much opposed as in support. Right?
So their last community council meeting, I believe there was over 100 people that showed up and most of them voted to not go for the special use district. So.
But we're still moving forth even though that community council, the majority of the people who didn't want to move over?
So we have a resolution going before the, the Assembly, stopping staff from working with them on a special use district.
Oh, to stop?
Yes, correct.
Okay. Okay. That's what I was reading. Yeah. I'm sorry, was that Assemblyperson Hale? Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I was just going to erase that. We have that resolution coming forward, but I think at our next meeting to stop work on that.
Okay. All right. But yeah, I hadn't seen it. Okay, thank you. We're here to go on, sir.
So Boroughwide Comprehensive Plan, as many of you recall, we had a planner that was going around the various communities and working on gathering input on what their vision for this community was. That, that person created a rough draft and left the borough and left the state of Alaska even. And yeah, and then we've had some turn of events with staff changeover and, and, and so that project has been on hold. To be perfectly frank, we have not had a fully staffed planning department in a while, which actually is, it reminds me, I do want Wade, so we have Wade Long in the back of the room here. This is our new Development Services Manager. Just yesterday was his first day on the job. He comes from the, the DMV and we are very excited to have him. He has a lot of really great experience in this type of work. And I think, you know, we're now going to have a fully staffed management team, which is going to be really nice and nearly a fully staffed department.
And he's going to cook tacos for us every day? Is that once a week or something like they did today?
That was Jason, but yeah. That was a group effort. Jason's the master taco cooker, for sure.
We all thought that he had to be a good pick for the staff. He feeds us the second day, so.
But we're, you know, I was in that position for 10 years and I felt like I brought it to new levels. And then Jason really took that and ran with it and brought it to whole new levels. I'm very excited for what, what he's going, where he's going to take all of this. So it's, you know, it's constantly evolving and we have a culture of innovation and trying to provide the best customer experience for the least amount of public dollars, basically. So, so the Boroughwide Comprehensive Plan, we will pick that up, but it's probably going to be later this year before we really can have the bandwidth to do that. And we're going to pick up the pieces. We have a little bit of money left in the, in the project account associated with that and we're going to try to really, really put something together that we can bring forward and everybody can get behind. Capital Improvement Program, that's an every year thing. I think here in maybe a month or two, I, I meant to get this date, but soon this will be, we're going to, you know, this is our annual cycle so that we can put together projects that are ranked and prioritized that the Assembly consider in their, in their budget process. Corridor Access Management Plan, which you're going to hear more about tonight. And then we do have community council boundary updates. We have a couple of communities that are requesting that their boundaries be changed, or one wants to be changed, which is the Trapper Creek Community Council, and then the Petersville Community Council wants to become a new district. So we have a planner assigned to help them navigate the process to make all of that happen. So.
What does, what does that entail? Do they have, like what we did with the fire service area? Will that have to be a vote in the election and both, you know? Or how does, maybe the attorney can tell me, how do you change the boundaries for the community councils? Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah. Thank you.
The Assembly does it. It does not require a vote.
Okay.
Perfect. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah. Yeah. But there's some, there are, there is a section of code that dictates how it all has to happen and we help them sort of navigate that process.
Okay.
There is certainly community involvement through the planning department, but the ultimate authority to say yes or no will rest with the Assembly.
Okay. All right. Thank you. All right, before you go on, I know I have been saying quite a bit. Does anybody else have any questions of what you've heard so far? Assemblyperson hours, go ahead.
Yeah, through the mayor. The Sub Area Solution Studies, you mentioned there's four areas you're looking at. The Bogard-Selden is one of them that we're going to talk about. The other two I remember were looking at the Fishhook Triangle where Palmer and Wasilla intersect because of all the growth up there and the extra traffic and trying to get ahead of it on that. And then the one I was really interested in was the Trunk Road Palmer-Wasilla Highway Intersection where it used to be Boyd's Potato Field and it's been that cleared gravel pad that for some reason doesn't get developed. But making sure that we have some intersection control over there or, or try to incentivize some really good development there. I know during the, the Sub Area Solutions Meetings, there was a lot of discussion about those. So two questions. One is what is the fourth one that I'm forgetting? And what is the timeline for the other areas to come forward to the Planning Commission and the Assembly?
Yeah. So, so you're right, it's Fishhook Triangle, which is Palmer-Fishhook, Wasilla-Fishhook and, and Bogard-Selden, which sort of forms a triangle. And then the other one is sort of the U-Med District, what, what we used to really refer to as U-Med District. So the college, the intersection that you speak of at Palmer-Wasilla Highway and Trunk is sort of the northern boundary of that area that's being studied. So it's all that entire area south of that. And then it is Vine, sort of the, the Vine Road area is the fourth area. Experienced a lot of growth and has a lot of traffic issues.
And then what's the, the timeline? Are you going to take one at a time and come forward to us? All these, like, they're all exploding at the same time, but what's the plan for coming forward?
So Corridor Access Management Plan is coming to you in the next, it's coming to you very soon, in the next month or two. It's coming to the Planning Commission and then the Assembly. The, the rest of the Sub Area Solution Studies is going to be later in the year, probably towards the end of the year or early next year before it comes to you. I might be, I'm, I'm hoping that I'm underpromising and over-delivering.
And just one quick follow-up. Do you have a prioritizing for those? Like, do you have the one that you would next bring to us?
Those three will come together.
They'll come together.
In one document. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
More than else? Okay. Go ahead then, sir.
Okay. Very good. So out of this whole list, there's no more questions? Okay. So this is a list, it's something that I occasionally provide to the managers, included the manager's report, but it's a list of Assembly-driven ordinances that you can anticipate coming to you. In, and hopefully some, some timeframes in here. So Homeless Shelter CUP is the one that's going to be, March 18th is set for referral. And then we have several coming right after that. I've, I've sort of reallocated one of our, we have a person who used to be a planner who's now a right-of-way inspector, who, as, while we were in a little bit of a slow season, he's been writing ordinances for me. So we're going to be, a lot of these are going to be coming forward. I don't know if you want me to go down one by one what they look like. Some of them are in draft form and concepts, but some of them are actually written, ready to, to go to the Assembly. So I guess if, if anybody has questions on this, I'd be happy to provide answers.
Assemblyperson, someone, or a different one, I guess?
I'm, I'm curious about Title 43, Indication of Sinkholes in Planting Process.
Yeah. So did you want to speak to that or do you want me to?
I can.
Okay.
This is where people bury the overburden, like the trees and everything on people's property. And then they don't mark it on the plat. And I've had a, a couple of people contact me who've had sinkholes open up on their property right near their house. And you kind of assume like the builder didn't even know it was there. Two, the one example's over in the Springer system recently, three acre property and the sinkhole opened up right off the back of the house and it's a $10,000 fix because they got to dig it all out. So it's, the idea is to, as much as possible, identify those spots in the planting process.
I mean, I have some, a little bit of experience in this matter and I can tell you that the builder might not have known that sinkhole was there, but the excavator that he hired most certainly did. And it did not, most likely did not occur during the planting process. So it's more of a land use permit. If you guys are going down this road, I'm just saying, it, it wouldn't be an onus of the developer that you'd be looking at. It'd be an onus of the builder.
Further discussion from anybody on this list? Okay. Okay. Go ahead. Proceed, sir.
So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Lori with HDR for the Corridor Access Management Plan. So at least the Assembly has been given a really good briefing on the corridor access management plans and the ins and outs. Then we went through this big process where we went through a public review process. We got a lot of comments back and we're asking the contractor to sort of go over what comments he'd received, what are the hot areas, what changes are we making or not and why? And so we're going to do kind of a run-through of the different areas. So, yeah. Just click or you can just hit the arrow button.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Lori Cummings and I'm with HDR, the consultant hired by the Matsui Borough to work on the Sub Area Solution Studies. And the camp project kind of spun out of that because we realized it has its own unique needs, especially needing to focus around access management. So tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about what is access management, the existing conditions in the corridor, the process used to define and refine the camp, as well as the next steps for it. A common question people ask is what is access management? And the simple answer is it's a tool that we can use to look at how to reduce crashes and improve traffic flow on a road. There are multiple ways that this can be accomplished. Common techniques include separating basic conflicts areas, which is basically providing adequate spacing between intersections and driveways. Reducing the interference with through traffic, so like managing the amount of turning traffic on a corridor. Limiting the number of conflict points in like the traffic world, conflict points like driveways and intersections, anywhere you have traffic doing different things. So by eliminating or consolidating driveways, we can manage the number of conflict points on a corridor. Also managing section line easements. On this particular corridor, there are 14 section line easements. So by managing how these easements are used, you know, which ones should have roads developed on them, which ones should be left undeveloped, you know, plays an important role in managing access to the corridor. And also practicing controlled land development. Having growth policies and ordinance in place will allow for proper access management and appropriate land development. You know, this tool will allow the borough to do things like develop frontage roads, develop shared parking areas and other types of land use management that are needed to control access onto this corridor. So as we mentioned, this camp really focuses on the Bogard-Selden corridor. You know, we divided it up into six sections based on land use and ownership. Those six sections are Segment A, which goes from the Glen Highway to Palmer Moose Drive. B goes from Palmer Moose Drive to the new Trunk Road. Segment C goes from New Trunk Road to the Bogard-Selden Mini Roundabout. D, from that intersection to Shrock Road. Segment E is Shrock to Lucille. And Segment F is Lucille to Church. And don't worry, I won't test you on the segments. And if, if at any time you have questions, please feel free to stop me. So Bogard-Selden has been a very important road in the Matsui Borough for a very long time. Historically, it was used as a local road. It provides a lot of direct access to property along this corridor. It was meant to serve lower traffic volumes, lower speeds, and used by people that live and work off that corridor. Now, however, it's primarily used as an arterial road. We have more people trying to go through at higher speeds, trying to get to different parts of town via this corridor, not necessarily going to somewhere on the corridor. It's also used by locals, but is a lot of people just driving through. Some sections of this corridor have been upgraded to arterial standards. Some are still more that local collector standards. So we start getting a conflict because you have people trying to use this road for different purposes. You know, and as a result, we have a lot of congestion and safety concerns. You know, this high traffic volumes can create safety problems because just the sheer volume of people trying to move through this corridor. This particular corridor has a lot of turning traffic due to the presence of driveways and side streets. And this can cause drivers to take a risk because the high traffic volume means there's fewer gaps. People are unsure about their ability to make a turn, so they might take a little bit of a risk if they see a bit of a gap because they might think it's their only opportunity. So the high, you know, turning volume can create a problem. You know? Also, it has cars traveling at different speeds. As cars are preparing to make a turn or are turning onto the road, they're slowing down or accelerating compared to the traffic that's trying to go through. This corridor also has inconsistent spacing. Driveways and side streets don't occur at regular spacing, so the other drivers can't always predict when they're going to encounter turning traffic. And there's also a lot of school traffic on this corridor, which creates peaks in the morning and the afternoon, but it also creates a lot of new drivers on the corridor. You have a lot of high school students who are learning to drive, have new driver's licenses, and they don't necessarily have the experience to deal with some of the high traffic volumes, you know, the turning traffic, especially if there's an accident or we have snowy or icy conditions. So this is really a good time to be developing this corridor access management plan because DOT and the Matsui Borough are working in conjunction on several projects in this corridor. And so by being able to incorporate the recommendations of this camp into those projects means they will be implemented sooner and being able to participate in the design and public outreach process to really get what the public wants to make this a safe, efficient corridor. So we presented this corridor, sorry, this camp, you know, back in October, November timeframe. Since then, the project team has been very busy conducting outreach to get public input about these recommendations. You know, we basically did the outreach as two campaigns. We did a draft of the plan and received feedback on that through October through early December. And then we revised the plan and basically spent the month of February getting additional feedback on those changes. So the robust outreach has really been a huge effort by the planning department. They have included direct mailers. They have done mailers to property owners within a half mile of the corridor with targeted mailings to property owners that would be impacted by these recommendations. They participated in multiple outreach activities, including an open house on the project and the transportation that was held in January, as well as participating in 10 meetings with community councils, local boards and commissions. They've also done other outreach activities such as phone calls and meetings with stakeholders, Facebook ads, newspaper ads, an article in the Planner Platform, electronic newsletter, and emails to other stakeholders such as community councils, transit providers, school districts, utility companies, road service areas, fire service areas. Some members of the project team even went out and did site visits in response to some of the input that we were receiving. All of this collectively resulted in almost 250 comments on the plan. So as a result, the project team has considered that input and has made some changes to the plan to reflect what we've heard. Some of the biggest changes that we've heard as a direct result of that feedback was we removed the proposed roadway connection connecting Sam's Drive with North Charlie Drive. I had outreach slides after Julie put so much work on them. Sorry, Julie. So as I said, we removed the proposed roadway connection connecting Sam's Drive with Charlie Drive. We modified the access points on the north side of Bogard Road to align with Cottagehill Drive. And we'll have a map later on. We added a frontage road on the north side of Selden between Caribou and Moose. And we added an eastbound right turn lane at Larson Elementary Circle. The most challenging segment on this corridor is what we call Segment C. It's where we've received the most comments and it's also had the most access points. So trying to find the balance between providing access to the property and providing efficient traffic flow. So trying to find the balance between providing access to the property and providing efficient traffic flow was really a challenge in here because we wanted to find out what the right balance was for the community. So this, one of the changes we made was including a proposed frontage road to reduce conflicts. But that may have an impact on some residential areas, and this will be analyzed further during the design phase. Another major change is realigning North Snow Goose Drive to align with Hemetite Drive. This has some grading and right of way challenges, but profile improvements and alignment will be determined later during subsequent design phases. So now we're going to go through the segments and kind of highlight the changes that we've made in response to the public. We do have a separate interactive map. We can zoom in if people are having trouble seeing them on the screen. So. I will try and use the pointer. So we'll see if you have trouble seeing it, let me know. So basically, in segment A, we had no changes. In segment B, it was aligning the frontage road. You're here, I was north with Cottage Hill Drive, south of Bogard Road. So this frontage road goes south and will connect to the subdivision. Any questions on segment B?
So what are you doing there? What are, what are, what are you doing there? Cutting that access off or what?
No, this would be a new frontage road along the north side of Bogard. And then there would be a new connection at that point.
Okay. And what does that do to this road to the south?
To this road here?
Yeah. How does, is that road still going to allow access onto Bogard?
I believe so, yes.
Okay, thank you. And can I just back, can you back up a minute? Do we own any right of way of this new frontage road, or is that all going to have to be purchased?
That is a very good question. Unfortunately, I don't know the answer to that. Alex, do you?
Alex drawn through the mayor, to the mayor. So this is a high level planning document. We did not analyze whether we have rights of ways or not. That's going to be something that has to be determined and right of way is going to have to be procured at the, at the plant or when they're actually designing and building the project. So this does not consider that. So we don't know.
It would seem like to me that it should go when we're adopting the overall project, but you know me and planning, so.
Sure. I guess I should clarify for all of the recommendations in these plans. You know, these are planning level recommendations of what the project team with input from the Mattsu Borough and DOT think the appropriate controls are. As each individual project gets developed, they will be further refined with further opportunities for public comment. So we will try and balance everything, you know, right of way needs, utility needs, you know, to come up with a project.
So, so let me ask this because, you know, that looks like to me it's going to, you know, involve a lot of probably private land, I think, along in there. Now, whether there are lots in there or if that's all owned by the same person. So that, I guess, was sort of concerning me because if we, if they won't sell and we have to go through, you know, public domain and that, then, you know, I guess that stops that whole section then, right? And so I don't know. It just seems like we need more. Go ahead, Assemblyperson Nowers.
I'll just piggyback on those comments because this is where two new subdivisions are going in and we're trying to avoid having a situation like Palmer-Wassilla Highway. We want a through fair, but we want to be fair to the developer because if that, we don't own that land, we're going to be taking, you know, they would have to give up that property. So I know the plan kind of says, well, we would encourage right of way. I mean, it would make sense to have these frontage roads and put in a controlled intersection instead of intersection, intersection, intersection. But what mechanisms do we have to try to reach the goals of this plan? If our plan is to have right of way is, you know, the, the thing that usually hangs you up is the cost in a willing property owner. So does this plan put any mechanisms in place to help overcome those when we get to these situations? Or do we end up just saying, well, we don't have any money. Would you like to give it to us?
Yeah, and everybody's so much interested and motivating to give land to the borough, right? So we got, we're home free and clear. Go ahead, Tom.
So Mayor, my name's Tom Adams. I'm the Public Works Director. So to Ms. Nowers, I think this plan, there's two examples where this plan shows exactly what you said. And they're both, for those that don't really recognize where we're at here, it's the new subdivision that we call South Colony. It's east of Colony High School, brand new subdivision that went in on the south side of Bogard. And there's been a preliminary plat action for the north side of Bogard now. In both occasions, this, this, even though this document's in its draft form, the developer actually worked with the borough and replatted his subdivision in accordance with this camp. So he did so with the constructed portion south of Bogard. He actually moved his access further to the east in accordance with this plan. And recently, he came through and worked with planning and with Public Works to change his access on the north side to align with the access on the south side and, and also manipulated his subdivision layout to provide the opportunity for the frontage road to cross the north side of Bogard. So in the absence of this plan, we might have had some new plats come forward that created the problems that we're trying to fix. But with this plan, we're able to cure some of those.
Okay, thank you. Did you have comments?
Just kind of curious how you still, and thank you, because that's fantastic that, you know, at least we had that discussion before we ended up with what's that intersection on the Palmer-Wassilla Highway? You got two lights within 20 feet of each other. Love those. What about right of way? Like, how do we, is there anything in this plan or tools in the borough's toolbox for, I see that frontage road, let me just assume, let's assume for discussion that some of that is on private land. How do we, do we have any extra tools in the toolbox, any kind of fund we set aside, et cetera, that would help, you know, maybe overcome, like the developer wants to help, but you're not going to pull money out of their pocket or tools I'm not even thinking of that are part of this plan for helping us implement the things we want to do?
So again, through the mayor, Ms. Nowers, so without the benefit of seeing the plat for this, but they really worked this, so the, the frontage road is served as an internal circulation for them as well. They redid their lot layouts to accommodate the frontage road. And, and over to the left side of this exhibit, there's a, right now, that's where a road comes off of just east of the roundabout, the trunk or the 49th State Street Roundabout. There's a road that goes up. There's like three or four homes up on that north side. What they did is enable, they brought their frontage road all the way across to their, their piece of the property, and they stopped. Ultimately, the funding part that goes off of their property, what we'd like to do is eliminate that access that's just east of the roundabout and then tie in that, the rest of the roadway on the north side of Selden so that that, all that traffic would then go down to either this new access where that gray box is or the frontage road would connect over to, you can see the, on the right side of the exhibit where the road kind of goes up. So I guess in short, that the plat, that developer worked with us and he dedicated the right of way needed along his frontage. We do still have some work that would be necessary to tie those in for properties he does not control.
One brief follow up is just, just trying to think about, this is one example, but there may be other ones where the developer, it's more of a burden on them. So trying to think about what tools we can have in the toolbox, if there's like a fund that we create, because we know if we end up with a bunch of intersections, it costs. There's costs associated with that. So I'm, I'm just trying to, as this moves forward, to try to think a bit about ways where we don't just have something that's written in a plan that we can't implement because we haven't thought through how we'd have the manpower or the funding. So that's just some things I'm thinking about for the future here. So if you have any quick ideas or?
Well, I could tell you again through the mayor, Ms. Nowers, I mean, one of the things that Alex and I have been talking for quite a while now is the ability to have advanced right of way acquisition. But unfortunately, since we don't have road powers, we can't spend area wide dollars to acquire rights of way without a vote of the people. So that is a challenge of us, ours. Now, potentially, if we had a road improvement project within RSA and that RSA chose to purchase the rights of way, you know, that's feasible, that could be done. But you know, we're, as you heard tonight, you know, we're challenged with spending limited funds on roads with the RSA is without trying to benefit a particular developer. So if we can overcome the road powers issue, I think we might be able to solve some of the right of way issue.
Thank you. Yeah, I want to talk, and I know this is not on the agenda, but on regarding the Palmer-Wassilla Highway, Midtown and Golden Hills. If they could have done only one light there if they would have closed off Midtown and sent it down even on that frontage road that's already there. So I don't, and I know that's a state project, but I mean, to me, it's so simple that there was no reason for two lights there. But anyway, I'll get off my soapbox and go ahead and get back to Bogard. Go ahead.
Mayor, I agree with you. In fact, I researched that, like, how did this happen? What went wrong? And it was, so the Midtown Estates was a subdivision that was done in the, I think it was early eighties.
Both of them were, I think, yeah.
From, from what I could tell, there is no reason why they could not have redone that subdivision a little bit to make those line up. But at the time, probably we didn't have the strongest codes in place. We might not have had the strongest plating officer. Maybe they got steamrolled and they let it happen. And the public paid for that, and we're still paying for that with this goofy situation. These are the types of things that we want to avoid going in the future.
I see, I see Adam sitting back there and he's, he's our safety person. So I don't know why it can't even be fixed now. Why you can't shut off that road from Midtown and send them down that frontage road. The frontage road is already there and have them come out on the light where the light is on Golden Hills. There is, yeah, there's no reason not to do that. So Adam, when you get lots of money, that's my request. Okay? Thank you.
I'm sure he's taking notes. I will say one other thing to Assemblymember Nowers' comments. So right now, the subdivision construction manual states that when you're doing a subdivision, you cannot conflict with the, with the official streets and highways plan, essentially. So if, I know that this is not the official streets and highways plan, but part of the SAS, the Sub Area Solution Studies, is recommending that we change it to say that you have to consider corridor access management plans when, when you're doing subdivisions as well. And, and so we may not necessarily require them to build a road or even dedicate the right of way, but their subdivision configuration can't make it so that it makes it impossible for us to do it in the future. So ultimately, you know, saving taxpayer money and doing it at a time where it's not going to cost the developer a bunch. You know, there's not going to be retrofitting and things like that.
Okay, thank you. All righty. I think maybe we'll let you get past segment B.
It's okay. I just have one thing I'd like to add. You know, many of the property owners that we've spoken to as part of this process realize a lot of the existing problems on this corridor, and they have expressed a desire to work with the borough and DOT about how to change access on their property. So while that doesn't guarantee all the property owners, but it does indicate that there's, you know, a lot of interest in trying to make sure future access onto this corridor is developed in a safe, responsible manner that kind of works well for everybody. So.
Yeah, they, they realize that probably more so than we do, right?
It makes for an attractive development if you have good access.
Yeah, right.
So, okay. Any other questions about this change? Okay, so the next area where we changed is, we eliminated additional driveways on the north side of Bogard between Trunk and Inkstrom, the kind of through here. And then we added a second option to access the Finger Lake State Park. This is the preferred option that is shown. You know, if this proves to be infeasible, there's an option to realign the Finger Lake State Park entrance to align opposite North Sebastian Drive. Any questions about? Yes, sir?
Yes, Assemblyperson drawn up. Go ahead, sir.
I looked through all this, the book, and I tried to find, you know, obviously the X's seems pretty obvious, but the yellow circles, the gray circles, the Apple AirPod little case, the white thing there. There's not a, you don't have a section that says which is each means. There's some. Underwear. Which page is that? Okay, that white thing over there, the Inkstrom, what is, that's very problematic intersection. Is that, what is, what do you have up there, update? And what does that actually means?
That symbol is a potential future roundabout for signal.
Yeah, that one, yeah. So all the, the white things, that's a roundabout.
A potential future roundabout or a signal. Additional work would be needed to determine the appropriate type of access control, but that's what we envision in that location.
Okay, thank you.
So where, where does the Elks Road come in on here, or have we gotten down that far yet on Bogard? I can't, what's the name of the street where the Elks come out on? Is that?
It's on the left hand side of the screen right there.
By the purple?
Yep.
So the Elks is going to go down and go to Finger Lake Campground? Is that what you said? I'm sorry, some, Emily, what did you say, sir?
On the lower left is the Finger Lake State Recreation Site.
On the lower left. So that's not then the Elks yet, right?
Elks is not in this picture.
Okay. Because Elks is a concern also. It seemed like to me that maybe some of that hill could be reduced or something. Will Elks be in the segment D then?
Do you know where, I don't know where the Elks? Okay, thanks.
Okay, go ahead.
Yeah, sorry.
It's on Berry's Resort Drive, across from Dolly Varden Drive.
Is that, is that the name of that street? Assemblyperson, someone?
Yeah, Berry's Resort on Berry's Resort Drive.
I mean, what's the name of that street?
Berry's Resort Drive.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Okay, go ahead. I don't mean to take up any more time.
So this is Berry's Resort.
Is that stone segment C or has they got into segment D there? It's in D? Oh, it's in C. Oh, just let's show. Oh, there's two pages for segment C. Okay, I see now. Thank you. Yes, Assemblyperson somewhere. Go ahead.
These orange paths, these are upgrading substandard roads or? I think there's a bridge, that north portion, there's a really kind of low quality bridge, isn't there?
Yeah, the north Dolly Varden would be basically an upgraded road.
So I believe Assemblymember Sumner, you're talking about this King Salmon Drive. Yeah. So, so this is definitely a problematic. So Alaska and the, I think it's Lucian Estates, number two, was deed it off illegally without going through the plating process back in the seventies. So it would be definitely a challenge to get the right of way through there and it'd probably be a bridge upgrade. We're putting this in here as our first option that we would like to do. But we did write language in here that said that if that doesn't work, there's other options available that, that are, are feasible. Particularly going through Birch Acres. So if you were to take Birch Acres. So if you were to take Birch Acres and just go directly west to Bear Street, that would, you'd still be able to close off grailing and, and everybody would have access onto the corridor. And that is written in the actual language of the, the plan. So, yeah, the map is not all there is to this plan. There is a written portion of it that, that goes into depth on some of these things.
That northern section of Alaskan Estates has some people I don't think are going to be very cooperative.
Understand.
Yeah, okay, go ahead.
Those are the changes on this segment of Segment C.
Let me just ask, any further questions on Segment C?
Oh.
Oh, yes, Assemblyperson, follow up, go ahead.
So the, anytime there is an X, that's pretty much a private driveway. Is that correct from my understanding? That's been potentially
The X is the proposed closure of that.
A closure?
Yes.
And with it, like, single lots, what is the, I guess, proposed method to give those people the access?
It depends on the lot. Some cases, the access is relocated onto a side road. Some cases, there is a frontage road or a backage road being added to provide them with access. One of the things we looked at as we were developing these recommendations was making sure that all the properties still had access to the road system.
Well, a lot of these, when you look at the individual, like, lots, and some of them are acre lots, seems like there is no access road. I mean, it seems almost impossible. I mean, I'm going to ask some very straight-up question, I guess. Is there any data that actually private driveways are actually causing accidents? Because if we're now eliminating them, we're sending to intersections because every, in my experience, because most of these areas in my district, I see the accidents over here that are on the intersection, not at the private driveway. So I'm almost hesitant to say I support this thing by sending more people that are responsible because those people that live there, there, I would argue with you that accident, the percentage of accidents happening from the private driveways is very little and maybe not even at their fault compared to the intersection accidents. So here we are, gonna close off, go to a crazy route to try to purchase property or whatever else is on, when that's not really the problem. I, I honestly have a, a problem with that, and I don't want to be the, the bad guy here, but I do see there is a, probably I have a logical argument here. And when we, if there isn't actually a good data that these private driveways are causing accidents, then we can talk about it because we're talking a lot of people that are actually living on, living on these excess areas that are going to be very inconvenient. And if there is no data that provides the supports that they're causing the accidents, I see that as a problem we shouldn't even attempt to resolve if there isn't a problem. And one of the regular questions that I get along these, the Section C, DE, which is all in my area, is say, there is a plan to do this, why can't we just have a center turn lane and that will resolve most of the problems? And I honestly don't know if that was ever considered. And what is the explanation to go this complicated stuff if we could gain each way, I don't know, 10 feet from each road and have that center lane? Where, has that been weighted versus doing all this complicated stuff versus widening the road a little bit and having the center lane? Could, could you fill me in a little bit on this, please? Or Alex, or any, or maybe even Tom? I actually, this is a legitimate question without trying to start an argument here.
Okay.
Go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I, I may rely on some of my engineer friends in the back to talk about this, but I, I will say that it is a general, I think, well-accepted notion that when you have a higher classification road that you want to have higher speeds, when you're talking about regional thoroughfare, that the more access points onto that road, the more dangerous it becomes. And it may not be the people that are pulling out or pulling into their individual driveway, but when you're having to stop and wait for cars to go by for you to get an opportunity to get in, it causes people to maybe pass on the right. It causes more decision points for people. It, it causes, it causes backing up of traffic. There, there's, there's all sorts of reasons why you want to limit access onto a higher classification road such as this, or a higher road that you need to move traffic regionally. It's fine on a local road to have access, 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 but imagine if you had a bunch of driveways accessing onto the Glen Highway, it just wouldn't work and it could cause accidents. So as a, as a road becomes more used with higher speeds, you want less and less access. And that's just a generally accepted principle of, of transportation planning.
That makes sense when you're building a new road and your right of way is structuring frontage road. We got like 12 plexes and four plexes that are accessing it directly. Is there anything that supports the, those are causing the accident? That's for one. And the second, if you could touch up about the, the center lane option, if that's a debated versus this versus they're having a center lane ever on this problematic area.
Did you want, did you want to talk about that?
Well, I would just add that they did consider center turn lanes when they evaluated the potential for each one of these segments and decided, you know, in this case, that was not the recommended solution.
Who decided that?
The project team.
Okay.
That were members of the consulting team as well as the Matsu Borough and DOT.
Okay, and what about the cost? I mean, we're talking, I don't know, what have we got? Forty drive, private driveways that will be closed? We have to give them access? If we go individually, go bargaining with people and people think, oh, Borough comes with unlimited checkbook, they are excited to start naming unreasonable numbers, or then otherwise there's a conflict. Not every, I guess, person is so welcoming of, I think Borough is trying to offer something. So I'm saying there has to be a comparison, two options that we have, maybe even more than two, that's saying, hey, widening this will have this cost impact and not just cost, but what it will get in acquisitions and all that. Sorry, I'm taking a little more time, but I, I do think being this in my area, knowing where the accidents happen, it's not the private people's driveway. And I know we want to make it right through, but if that was the case, then we should be putting bridges everywhere or the, this is not just a through, it is a through road, but it is also very well populated with acre on probably smaller lots that are connected to it.
So this would have been a great plan to do 30 years ago. I would, I would totally agree with that, that, that it would have been much, much cheaper to the public to do this plan before the different connectors over by Colony came in, before, you know, at the very beginning. We're trying to, so this is a, a vision for what this road could look like. It's not something that's going to happen overnight. It's probably going to happen in phases. This is a, a decision-making tool, like when there's going to be new development such as the gravel pit that went up there very recently. We use this plan when, when, when we were talking with them about approval of that gravel pit, even though it's in draft format. When there's new subdivisions that come in, yes, there are some homes and, you know, if you look at when the Seward Meridian was upgraded or when the Glen Highway is upgraded, you see some businesses and homes get boxed up and moved away. This is what happens with road projects. We're not saying this is going to happen overnight. This is not a road project that we are proposing. We're proposing a long-term vision for this. If you want a fully functioning east-to-west corridor running through this valley, there's going to be some, probably some homes are going to have to be removed, and there's going to be some people they're going to have to access differently than what they're accessing now. So this is a vision for that. This is not condemning any homes. This just provides that vision.
Do we have a traffic count on Bogart versus a traffic count on Palmer Wassila? Because I, to me, Palmer Wassila with the turn lane works pretty good. And so is a traffic count on Bogart greater? So that would necessitate something like this versus what's going on in the Palmer Wassila?
Again, Adam Bradway, Alaska DOT. So I'll just, because the only ones off the top of my head that I really know really well, the highest volume of the Palmer Wassila is about 14,000 cars a day. Highest volume of Bogart, which is right there where the new gravel pit is going to be, is about 12,000 cars a day right now. But our projections show that Bogart will most likely outpace the Palmer Wassila Highway sometime in the next 10 to 20 years. And
Because of the large parcels that are undeveloped along the Bogart where we don't have those along the Palmer Wassila?
Well, also because people are going to start using Bogart as more of a, a cut through or a, an alternative corridor to, say, the Parks Highway. As, as some of these other areas, like the parks continue, continue to get more congestion and we continue to improve Bogart, more cars will continue to use Bogart instead.
Okay, thank you. Yeah. Assemblyperson Nowers, go ahead.
You pretty much answered my question. Just the, if we're at 12,000 vehicles now, where are we going to be in another 10 years, another 20 years, and how much harder it is to deal with the problems then? And, and I guess just comment and a question, but the comment is, like, we pay for this in not only slowed commerce between the cities, but in accidents, including fatalities. And the, so making this a safe corridor for commerce to go between Palmer and Wassila and numerous people that I know have been involved in accidents here and nobody fatal, thankfully, but the cost of their insurance, the cost to repair the car, the lost time, the injuries, like that, that's not on the balance sheet for us or for the developer. That's just on the balance sheet for the people who live here. So I definitely think about that in the balance. And then I just, as terms of crashes on this road, somewhere in the report, is there an appendix or something that if we want to look at for the crash statistics? Is that somewhere in here or somewhere else we can access that information?
The crash information, if you look at the project website, there is some crash information available, but also in the Safe Streets for All has more of a crash information.
Thank you. Yes, Assemblyperson Sumner, go ahead.
Oh, just, if you remember, we, we were giving some crash data the last time they brought the camp to the assembly, but it didn't include some of the insurance reporting, just police reports.
Any other questions before we proceed? Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
So on this portion of Segment C, one of the changes we made is we changed the location of this connection between Burlwood and Green Tree. On the new backage road on Radon Drive, we removed the connection so it's no longer a through road. It'll be accessed in parts to reduce cut-through traffic. The, if the grailing connection near East Pike, we included an alternative option. That's documented in the report, not here on the map. Down near Bear Cub Court, we provided a new frontage road so people would have access through here instead of off this road. We added a new frontage road on Bogart between Bear, Moose, and Caribou through here. We added left turn lanes on Bogart at the Cottonwood Loop Departure Court intersection? I believe it's Sorry, I can't see the street names. I believe it's that one. And we eliminated the backage road between Shandell Court and Caribou Street to the frontage road from Lazy Eight to Departure now goes from Lazy Eight to Shandell through there. And we removed the connection that was initially proposed between Sam Drive and Charlie Drive, which is off the map. Kind of, any questions about these changes?
On the frontage road that's going to go to Bear Street, is that going to go above that church there on that corner or is it going to go through that land?
The details about the exact location of the frontage road would be decided at a later stage when there's actually a project under development. This is meant to show that concept of there would be a frontage road along this corridor, but additional work would be needed to determine the exact location of that.
Okay, all right, thank you. Anyone else's questions, comments? Okay.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Then here we added Segments D and E together. We added the right turn lane at the Larson Elementary Circle, which is over here. We closed Old Squaw Loop at East Selden. Will be here. And have a new road connecting Old Squaw Circle to Snow Goose near Pintail Drive. The traffic would go this way. And we realigned Snow Goose Drive with Hemetite Drive for safety improvements right through here. So any questions about those? Changes?
Does this, did you want to, go ahead, go ahead.
Yeah, I have a question. I don't, right where Bogart and Selden, where, where they, where it changes, it isn't shown on this at all. It's a cutoff on both of the pages where the circle is.
Okay.
Is there any possible changes on that circle or is that planned to remain the way it is?
Okay. Is this the location you're talking about?
Yep.
If a potential future of, or the mini roundabout would remain, we're not proposing any major recommendations of that location.
Through the mayor?
Go ahead, follow up.
Is there a reason why there's no consideration of looking at that? Because I, I think there's been issues with that roundabout because it is so small.
Again, Adam Bradway, through the mayor. So this was a DOT safety project, putting in the, the mini roundabout. And that project is sort of based on the cost benefit of how many crashes there are to how effective the solution is. Unfortunately, that mini roundabout is extremely effective at not having really serious crashes. So it hasn't been at the top of our list, but I know it's gotten a lot of, a lot of interest. We've had legislators asking about, like, that project in particular. We have a project coming up for the section of Bogart between that roundabout and Trunk Road, but this one didn't quite pencil out for that, although it's something that I know, you know, especially legislators from Matsu have been interested in potentially finding funding for it. So it could come up, it's not on any of our current plans. And from the access management side, it functions for access management, so that's probably why it didn't have any changes in this plan.
I don't know. We get, we get complaints from people that drive pickups with trailers on it, to school buses, to everything regarding how tight that is. And when you're looking, and when we're talking about what the population's going to be in 10, 15 years, that intersection's going to be the most impacted because you're going to have all of the traffic on Bogart before they decide to go on the old Bogart or they decide to go down Selden. So, you know, and I know that, you know, MEA has that power, that, that was what was explained to us, I think, before when we had concerns right after it first started because we had people in here a lot regarding that. And it was because of that and not, you know, that gas station that's there and stuff. But I don't know. I guess I would encourage you to take another look at that because that is going to be the end of all of that traffic on Bogart before they decide whether they're going to go west or whether they're going to turn and go south. So it's not like there's another road for them to go from Bogart down to the Palmer Wassila, so, yeah. Anyway, I, I interrupt you. Anyway, I interrupt you, I don't know if you've got all your follow-up or not, sorry ma'am.
I did, thank you, mayor.
I guess I'll just add something, if I may. This plan focused on looking at access along the corridor. And in this case, you know, the roundabout provides access. So this plan is not precluding improvements at that location. It's just not proposing a change in access at that location.
Okay, Deputy Mayor?
You know, that's the only roundabout that I noticed that there's tire prints go straight across after a snowfall and stuff, and it's like, hmm.
Are some of those yours, sir?
And while I can't disagree that, you know, potential improvements may be needed at this location, I will also add that some roundabouts are designed for larger vehicles to drive over them in that nature. So I don't know this particular location, but, you know, because this is looking at access, that doesn't preclude, you know, other intersections, improvements, you know, that don't affect the access.
Yeah, well, it's, I mean, you have schools both left and right from that roundabout. I think you have probably, what, four, five schools? That go across that intersection one way or the other. So, anyway, any further? Okay, no, we'll let you go ahead, ma'am, go ahead.
Okay. Okay, that was Segment D and E. And so the changes on Section F is we removed the backage road between North Intuition and the unconstructed O'Ship Road. So we're extending the frontage road between Cambry and that unconstructed O'Ship Road with one that goes from North Intuition to Brockton. Kind of see a segment through there. And we closed the direct access driveways on the north side of Selden, so these properties would now use that frontage road.
Anybody have any questions?
Any questions?
Yes.
Just thinking about the right-of-way issue that the mayor brought up. It would be nice in the plan if there was, if we could do it. Some indication if there's enough right-of-way there to do a frontage road or if it's not. Because I know the right-of-way really varies along the road, so if it was possible to know if we're looking at 80-foot right-of-way that's there or 300-foot right-of-way and might have some room for a frontage road.
That's a good point, but I will also add that many of these projects are not going to be implemented as standalone projects. They would be implemented as part of road reconstruction projects. So sometimes the right-of-way may change depending on what the road construction needs are. And that would influence also the frontage road, you know, its location, its width. So there are many factors to consider and that we don't know yet.
So right now on Selden, on F, what we have before us, what is already built there, is that in all, takes up all the right-of-way? I think that's the question, that's what the question I was interpreting, Assembly, right? You were asking if there is right-of-way already there or are we going to have to purchase it? I mean, that's what I interpreted what you were asking. Yes, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So right-of-way acquisition and associated design is a complicated matter.
Right, I understand that.
Yeah, and so it may... Say it again?
Sheila works there.
Yeah, Sheila does work there.
I know very well.
Yeah. And it may be that when a road project comes through, you're scooting the road to the south a little bit to buy a little room to the north. I guess the point I'm making is that if we wanted to incorporate right-of-way acquisition into this project, it would be a much more expensive and lengthy process because it would take a tremendous amount of research and design work and things like that. So we were not able to really consider... We did a bit, you know, we could give it the old thumb and say, "Yeah, we think we could squeeze a frontage road in there." But generally speaking, we did not go into depth on whether there's enough right-of-way. So some of these may result in acquisition of homes or just right-of-way.
Right, that's why I was just asking, the footprint that's there, if that takes up all the right-of-way now? Yes.
Kurt Skog, I'm just, I'm following on a hunting app right now. It's like, if you could put the property lines out of the property owners, it would be helpful. I like, as I've been following each segment through here, there's some of this that's actually already on state land where you're drawing, you're kind of debating whether, you know, if you can get access, what's, it's already either state or borough land. So, and in a lot of cases, it isn't, but I just seen that some of them were... But that would be helpful, I think, for everybody to see those property lines on there. I don't think it's a big deal to put on there, but I'm just following along a little cheap app on my phone. So might alleviate some of the questions.
Thanks for your comment.
Any other questions from anybody? Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
Okay. So now I want to talk about the next step. So as we've seen tonight, there's been a lot of interest in this in determining what is the appropriate access management. You know, everybody's had a lot of opinions about what it should be. And like I said, they've provided over 250 comments to the project team. So the project team is now working on, you know, resolving all those last comments and figuring out what the recommended solution would be. Once that is done and we have an adoption draft, that will be presented to the Planning Commission and the Assembly for adoption, and then it will advance into plan implementation. You know, we anticipate these projects being implemented over the next, you know, 50 years, maybe longer. Like, as we've talked about tonight, there's a lot of issues that need to be addressed, you know, as part of the implementation of these projects. Many of them will be implemented as part of larger reconstruction projects of the road, where they'll have to look at issues if the road needs to be expanded, you know, what non-motorized facilities are needed? Is it sidewalks? Is it trails? You know, availability of right-of-way utilities? So all of those will be considered as part of the implementation process being done by the Borough and DOT. So now we'd like to answer any additional questions you may have.
Okay, sir.
Through the mayor, Commissioner Fernandez. I'm just curious, what's the process that you guys go through to sort of categorize and isolate in the comments, right, the public comments? Where there are common trends, right? And so knowing, I guess, how do you categorize that? And is there a way that you're able to assess common trends in the comments from the public and from Assembly members and commissioners?
We didn't get to that level of analysis for the comments. We did look at every single comment and provide a response to that, you know, in terms of what, sorry, what changes we recommended to the plan or if we did not recommend that change be addressed.
Just as a follow-up, but there is a process at some point to sort of, I guess, look for where there might be easy answers, right? Because these are people that are driving the roads every day. That's probably the primary reason they have comments. And so there's probably a lot of solutions that may or may not have been considered by the group that you're working with.
Yeah, the project team looked at all of the comments that they received. In some cases, they followed up with the commenter with phone calls, had them in for individual meetings. And in several cases, you know, somebody from the project team actually went out and did a site visit to look at those conditions to just kind of check if what we were proposing seemed reasonable. So we did try and do that robust outreach and make sure, you know, we had people support for the plan and that these recommendations were feasible.
Assemblyperson, follow up, go ahead, sir.
Could you go to the Segment D slash E, please, if I may ask you? So when you said this was proposed, can you tell me, like, who was actually, like, who was recommending these changes specifically, like, in this area, let's just say? Like, the one could be a good example, Snow Goose making that purple line connecting with Hemetite. Who is the, whose recommendation is that mostly?
I can't speak to individual recommendations. There was a project team consisting of members from HCR, several representatives from the Borough, and several representatives from DOT who worked collectively to come up with these recommendations. And then those have gone out to the public twice for a view and comment. They have provided notifications to all the property owners along this corridor, have appeared in multiple community council meetings, you know, an open house, the transportation fair, to try and ensure people who live and work along this corridor were informed of these, you know, potential recommendations.
Yeah, and the reason why I ask, because I actually, my house is on this specific picture here. Like, the Old Squaw, that has only like 22 lots there that it's one way in, one way out. The proposition over there to just go through a yellow line, which is through a swampland to build a road, is, I don't know, not hundreds, possibly millions of dollars to make this stuff. And then to just block off these 22 parcels there. Then the Snow Goose, like, making that extension, where if you look at the topography, if you drive that road, the Snow Goose actually is, kind of sets up high where you can see cars both direction. But if it was connected to the Hemetite over there, that actually on the sloping down, so only you can see cars coming from one way very clearly from far away. So I'm not sure if some of these propositions are, like, me just looking at it and living in this area, I kind of seem like some of these are very unreasonable. And before, I don't know what it cost us to get this study done, but I would love to, and I would strongly ask Assembly's support, and Planning Commission probably even will agree that on this specific area, that before we really go too far into this, is so that we have a comparison that the center lane option, what's the cost analysis? Because I do find there's a lot of little, individual little things that don't necessarily solve the big problem, but the information we had on the Palmer-Wassila Highway and knowing that we as residents drive there, I believe that helped a lot, the Palmer-Wassila Highway. And I think that would definitely do a lot for the Selden thing. And that could be, I think, accomplished a lot quicker, not in 30 or 40 years, but that could be done a lot quicker than just starting to build these roads through the swamp and everything else and expanding, building frontage roads. So I'm hoping that we can get more options besides what we have here.
Okay, Assemblyperson, Sumner, did you have comments, sir?
Oh, yeah, I was going to say, first and foremost, I think this section of road needs some shoulders, but if you've ever driven it, you know what I'm talking about. But I would say topographically, I think that Assemblyperson Fawnoff, I mean, looking at the sightlines from Snow Goose and Hemetite, I think it would make a lot more sense. I think you guys should look at that one specifically. Hemetite aligning with Snow Goose would make more sense from a sightline standpoint than Snow Goose to Hemetite. And also from a topographic standpoint, if you look at where you'd have to run that road, you know, Snow Goose, yeah.
Any other questions? Yes, Assemblyperson hours, go ahead.
So I just got my email today, the STIP Amendment Two for the Selden Extension. So I don't know who can answer this, but when we build the Selden Extension, do we have a plan for access points on the Selden Extension? I'm looking at Adam. He's looking at the back of the room.
Yes, that was a Borough CTP project, Community Transportation Program project that the Borough nominated to the state of Alaska to build. And I believe they have an access, adopted by the Borough, access management plan for that segment.
Great, thank you.
Further questions or comments before we move on? Okay, all right, thank you.
I will just add, if you have any other additional questions or comments, you wake up at 2:00 AM with another question you're just burning to ask, you know? Julie Spackman is the... She's the massive Borough planner working with us on this project. So her contact information is on the screen. And our project website is also available. There's a lot of additional information there. And if there's a question, you know, Julie can be able to get ahold of us and other members, and we'll be able to answer any additional questions you may have. So thank you very much for your time this evening.
Thank you. Okay, Alex, are we ready to move on then to water body setbacks?
Well, once again, this is Alex Strawn. That was a lot of fun, and if you think that was fun, wait till we do this one. So... Yeah.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, so this, this effort started a couple of years ago when I got a call from an Assembly member saying that he wanted to just get rid of setbacks in water bodies altogether. And it's been quite a journey ever since. And I guess, you know, really, the, in order to understand the problem that we're trying to solve here, I'm just going to go into a little bit of the history and kind of identify the problem that we're trying to fix. And so in 1973, water body setbacks, the 75-foot water body setback was adopted. And then in 1986, it was dropped down to 45 feet. And I will say that it was probably largely unenforced, and it seemed to be enforced sort of through the plating regulate. Like, we put plat notes about 75 feet, and they tried to tie it to our plating regulations. I think it was not very well, maybe advertised. People didn't know or didn't care that there's water body setbacks, and there's been sort of development along water bodies within the 75-foot setback since 1973 pretty consistently. 1986, it dropped down to 45 feet. The Assembly actually adopted an ordinance dropping it to 45 feet. And then very shortly thereafter, there is a referendum which brought it back to 75 feet. The people of the Borough sort of overwhelmingly voted to bring the setback to 75 feet. So there's a six-month period where it was 45 feet, and then it became 75 feet. And so people who were built prior to 1973 have grandfather rights, regardless of how close they were to the water body. If they were built prior to May 12, 1987, they're, and they're greater than 45 feet, they would be grandfathered, if that makes sense. Because for six months there, the law of the land was 45 feet. So if you were built illegally, but then you became legal with that 45 feet, and then illegal again, you'd have certain rights for grandfather. But the end result is that we did a GIS analysis using our LiDAR data, which actually gives us a really accurate location of the water and buildings. It's very good, some of the products that comes from GIS or from LiDAR is building footprints and water break lines. And we also have year-built data from assessments. And so we were able to do sort of, you have to take with a grain of salt, but essentially, we were able to determine there's somewhere around 750 or so homes that were built in violation of the water body setback, that are closer than 75 feet. And, let's see here. And 309 of those were within 45 feet. So you're looking at, so, well, this is important, the 45 feet is important because of the way the ordinance is structured, and I'll talk about that when we get into it here. But basically, right now, on lakes alone, not rivers, not streams, we're looking at 750 or so setback violations out there, yes.
Yeah, you brought rivers and streams, but I mean, there's not really a good way of determining setback violations on those, right? And there's got to be a lot.
That's correct. The LiDAR data does not give us a good boundary of where that stream is at. And streams move as well, so it's a much more difficult exercise. We really focused on lakes for the GIS analysis.
Assemblyperson?
Quick question. On the last slideshow, 454, is there a decent number that are like 70 to 75 that are like close, maybe they just bereffed them to calculate it? Is that number awfully low or there is actually a good chunk of that? I kind of curious, you know, if you know that.
So of the 450, so it, I don't know, you know, where they're positioned between 45 and 75 feet. I mean, this was a GIS, the GIS did this for us and they just gave us the numbers, so I don't know. And, you know, it's not going to be perfectly accurate. They're going to be a couple of feet off, so we may have captured some that were actually built legally and some that were built, you know, we probably missed some that were built legally. We probably missed some that were built ill built legally. But uh there's it's also further compounded by the the fact that our year-built date is one date when there may be several uh structures on one property. So it it we may have a year built that's after, but it's built plenty far back. So this is not a reliable number. It just is the best we could come up with based on the data we have. It may be a lot more than this, maybe a lot less. But this is probably a pretty good ballpark of how many setback violations we have. Okay, yeah.
Yes, Deputy Mayor.
And these aren't just houses. These are any type of structure, woodshed or pavilion for picnic or?
Correct. So that's correct. And so I had them cut it off at four hundred and eighty square feet. So they didn't count anything that's smaller than that, about the size of a two-car garage.
That's what sixteen by twenty-four?
Sure. After the math, yeah. Uh so so I'm gonna show you a different version of this later on. But right now, this is sort of a graphic representation of who has grandfather rights and who doesn't, based on what year they were built and how far away from the the setbacks they are or how far away from the water body they are. So uh um so in March, just just to go back on what the effort was and what led up to this is March twenty twenty-three, the Planning Commission reviewed the uh ordinance that would have completely eliminated the setback. They recommended failure of that ordinance and it was withdrawn by the maker. So that never made it to the Assembly. And then the Assembly directed uh staff to work with the Planning Commission on amendments to the water body setbacks. And uh I worked with the Planning Commission as well as uh sponsoring a Assemblymember that actually allowed people to go up to twenty-five feet of a water body if they were hiring engineer and uh sort of treat and detain the stormwater associated with that development. That uh also failed. The the Planning Commission opposed it and then the the Assembly unanimously defeated the ordinance and established the Water Body Setback Advisory Board in August of twenty twenty-three. The the Water Body Setback Advisory Board um composed of, uh it's a nine-person board. We had three at-large. We had a member from the Planning Commission, and in fact, it was the Chair, CJ Kohn. Uh we had a member from the Fish and Wildlife Commission, a member from the Salmon Habitat Partnership. We had, I believe, two people from real estate. And then um we had, we had two engineers on the on the board as well. So pretty diverse group of uh pretty capable and intelligent people on the board. We met a total twenty-two times for for forty-eight hours of meeting time we had. And uh we uh we met for um, I think it was in they they were coming to close in around October of twenty twenty-four. And uh they they were not quite done yet and we had um requests from September twenty twenty-four, we had requests from community councils to send what draft we had out for review. Uh so we were granted an extension of six months to complete it and to get garner public output. We did send out, uh we sent all the community councils and put on our webpage and did some advertising to try to get the word out. Uh I went on the road and went to a different planning committee or to different community councils and gave presentations uh on what was in the draft ordinance and we received eighty-five comments. And uh um uh the board then met, started meeting every Wednesday for three hours and incorporating those comments into the ordinance. And uh the the ordinance, right, they have adopted a resolution with recommendations and they're just about to finalize the ordinance that's attached to the resolution. So they're not quite done. They have one more meeting left. And uh so it's by the skin of their teeth that they're going to have a final product by the time they're they expire on March eighteenth. So there will be uh that the ordinance that formed the board, there there's a provision that says that the Chair will provide a written and oral report to the Assembly. And and so that will happen on March eighteenth, sort of priming you, giving you the information that you have so that uh that can be be meaningful. At that point, uh it'll be in your hands. If somebody wants to sponsor legislation or modify legislation, bring it forward, then it'll be up to the Assembly to bring something forward.
Sir, does um, does it go back to the Planning Commission? Once it or the Assembly doesn't refer it to the Planning Commission once we have the ordinance or?
So, yeah, after March eighteenth, if an Assemblymember decides to sponsor that ordinance or some version thereof, it will absolutely have to go to the Planning Commission for review. Yes.
So the people, so all of you that are here that are interested in that, you'll have a couple of shots. One will be Planning Commission, which will have introduction, public hearing. Then it'll come back with whatever recommendations they have to the Assembly. And then you will will have an introduction and then you will have uh public hearing at that time. So there will be ample time to give further input. Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
So when we first started meeting, uh there's so there's a lot of information that needs to be gathered before people can start making decisions. And so we had, um I'm just some topics of discussion that the board had was we talked about code enforcement and what are our tools, a lot a lot of things we've talked about in front of this board. We we did an in-depth review of the mandatory land use permit, existing setback violations. We had a person from the Matt Valley Federal Credit Union come and talk about uh loaning on structures that are legal and how how the setbacks affect their process. We reviewed the, we had a setback analysis done in nineteen ninety-eight that talked, really did analysis of why do we have setbacks? What are they good for and and made some recommendations? And essentially what they said is that it's really site specific. There are times where you can build close to a water body, closer than seventy-five feet, not have any water quality issues whatsoever. There's times where you can build further away than seventy-five feet and be polluting it. And 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 uh there's, you know, definitely an in-depth review of our of our code. Seventeen fifty-five, which is water body setbacks, seventeen sixty-five, which is variances, seventeen eighty, which is non-conforming uses. So many different, you'll see that this ordinance actually, I think, affects like five different sections of code uh because it's all sort of inter intertwined. Uh we had a uh an engineer who specializes in stormwater runoff come and give a presentation to us and talk about some water quality issues associated with the development. Uh so the first few meetings were really just gathering information. And uh it was pretty amazing. Once we sort of got over that hump and people really understood all the different facets of this, they really started clicking. Using Robert's Rules of Order, uh started just making, I started with a draft ordinance that was very similar to the ordinance that was uh presented to the Assembly and failed. Uh and they started just making changes to that based on the knowledge they had gained. So I'm gonna go, what, I'm gonna go through what are the major highlights of the draft ordinance that's been recommended by the Water Body Setback Advisory Board? First is there is a big cleanup, deleting unnecessary language, outdated languages. There's still stuff about the city of Wasilla in there that needs to be deleted. So really cleaning it up. Clarified the intent. And then clarified which which properties qualify for pre-existing legal non-conforming status. And of the eighty-five comments that received, a good, uh I I don't know what percentage of it, but seems like around half or so were based on a misunderstanding of what was in code. We we had a provision in there that said that if you're built between this date and this date, you're granted non-conforming new status as long as you haven't expanded. Well, that already was in code. It just wasn't written clearly. And so we we wrote something that uh was very clear, uh if you, that clearly states who qualifies for grandfather rights and got people their hackles up. But that's actually already existing and it has existed since nineteen eighty-seven. So there are, in this draft ordinance, new general standards that apply to waterfront properties. So you can't have kennels, stables, animal yard, animal yards closer than one hundred feet. If you're, so a a big one is right now, our uh our code only applies to habitable structures. So if you were to build a restaurant or brew pub or something like that, the it's a very good argument that the water body setback code does not apply to you and you can build right up to the water body. So this does expand it to include commercial and industrial facilities. And uh the essentially says that the the parking areas have to be, if 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 they're within seventy-five feet of a water body, that they have to drain it away from the lake and and have it infiltrated into the ground before it actually goes into the lake. Um a big problem that we've had um with the seventy-five foot water body setback is that I think we heard this from Trooper Massey that came in here and said that basically built his his restaurant away from the water body and put his parking lot right next to the water body because of the setback rule. And that that is really, um you know, parking lots collect drips. And if it's draining towards water because it's downhill, that's about the worst case scenario you can have. You'd rather have the parking lot away from the water body so it can be somewhat treated before it gets to it. So storage of liquid hazardous substances within seventy-five feet requires secondary containment. So we're talking fuel oil. Uh so my understanding and I, we have no idea how many fuel tanks are within seventy-five feet of a water body. There's no way for us to know. I have heard there are a few on Big Lake because people fill their fuel tanks in the winter time and they want to use the ice roads. So they actually have the fuel tank close to the water so they can fill it up. Uh this, this becomes a rule that says you cannot have fuel tanks within seventy-five feet of a water body. And if you have one that is closer than seventy-five feet of a water body, you have five years to either move it out, move it away, further away, uh or uh essentially do retrofit it so that it has like a double-walled tank. So you'd have to remove that tank and and put in a doubled wall tank with with or have secondary containment. That would be a secondary containment. The other option is to have a non-gravity-fed fuel tank. Uh when I spoke to um a supplier of fuel tanks who does this type of retrofitting, he said that it's always going to be a double-walled fuel tank. That's gonna be the cheaper option uh here. And and did say that it was gonna come at quite the expense if people wanted to retrofit. He he quoted fifty thousand dollars all said and done, which may be high, I don't know, but that's that's what he quoted. So getting rid of the old one, maybe doing some re-contouring, developing a new base, and then the more expensive fuel tank. So some things that would be prohibited. Yes, sir.
What what about like a float plane fueled?
Yeah, so, right, so it would have to be retrofitted. I think a lot of those already do have double-walled. I'm not sure. But it would, if if it was if within seventy-five feet, it would have to be retrofitted if this were to be adopted as proposed. Um so some things that are prohibited, yes.
You know the D E C Alaska State Department of Environmental Conservation rules are for fuel tanks within seventy-five feet of lakes?
So I tried to find any state law that has a setback for fuel tanks from water bodies and I could not find one. Yes.
So do you think uh there are people at the Matsu Borough who are better qualified to regulate fuel tanks than the people at the Alaska State Department of Environmental Conservation?
So I said, so that is not what I'm saying. I am conveying to you what is in the recommended ordinance adopted by the Water Body Setback Advisory Board.
I'm just getting prepared for March eighteenth.
Okay, all right, yeah.
Well, we won't, we'll just have an introduction and I won't have much comment. Chairman Kohn, go ahead.
Um this Commissioner Kohn, one of the things that um I did recently look into with D E C is that any amount of oil or petroleum products spilled in the water must be reported immediately to D E C. Immediately. So um some of the comments that we had heard, some of the things that we had heard on the board, that probably isn't taking place all the time. So I would just say that. Anyway, so yeah, D E C is the ones who are definitely, they have the standard and we did look in law.
I have a question down here in the
Okay, go ahead there, lady down.
Commissioner McCabe, um what, is there any prohibition of somebody putting a fuel truck right next to the lake and just leaving it parked there?
You're you're saying if this recommended ordinance were to be adopted? So storage of liquid hazardous substances, I don't know if, you know, I don't know if that's really well-defined, whether it's a timeframe or if it's on wheels or whatever. So I I don't know the answer to that. Yeah, that it's a good one.
I'm just thinking about the ways people work around.
Yeah, understand, yes. So I mean, I will say that when this was being discussed and adopted, I did express that I thought this would be a very difficult one for the Borough to enforce and implement. And that when uh when it actually comes time to, you know, five years has gone up and there's still fuel tanks along the water body, I thought it would be um politically impalatable and uh difficult to enforce. Uh the the board took that information and said this is a very important provision of this law and decided to adopt it.
Assemblyperson Fawnoff?
Um, I guess my question, how did the structure setback that is decent amount of size and the fuel tanks got uh mixed here? I just, I thought it's a structure setback, not a fuel tank setback. Can you tell me what the arguments was?
I think that the the board wanted to um solve this issue of illegal setbacks and protect water quality. That they want, water quality was uh something that they had on their mind when they're developing these regulations. And you know, we have, uh my understanding is that Big Lake and part portions of Little Susitna River now are impaired water bodies because of hydrocarbons.
Go ahead, sir. I'm seeing the other question.
So I'm gonna keep going here. Yeah, so prohibited within twenty-five feet would be, uh and this was also another controversial one, but ultimately is approved unanimously, was removal of riparian buffer. So if you own lakefront property and you have vegetation down by the lake, uh you could only remove fifty percent of that. So uh that would be the new law of the land. Uh storage of solid waste, including debris, animal yard waste.
Alex, real quick, on uh out, Kurt Skoggin, the removal of fifty percent, is that for fifty percent? Is like, can I take half, like this is my lot, I can't take this fifty and clear it and make access for float plane? There's just fifty percent of the trees are there. Can you clarify that?
Yeah, so yeah, thi- this would be, when it comes to actual enforcement of this, it would be really interesting. But the way I've looked at it, because I've had this question, is so you have, you have a line that is the water body or the the shoreline, you have a twenty-five-foot buffer coming off of that. So you have this area that is twenty-five feet deep and a certain length. So as long as you don't remove fifty percent of that, so you could remove uh, say if you had a hundred feet of shorefront, you could move all that twenty-five-foot vegetative buffer on fifty percent of it, on fifty feet of it. Or you could remove twelve and a half feet along the entire shore, right? So, yeah, yeah. And 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 I will say, you know, and we'll get to it here, but the idea of this is that there would be a land use permit that would be required for any mechanized clearing along water bodies. And that um if you either had already removed uh over fifty percent of your riparian buffer, the vegetation along the water body, or if it was naturally just not there for whatever reason, or you purchased your property like that, there is a a way that you can sort of come into compliance and and be still allowed to build and things like that, uh even if that's been removed.
So people that cleared all the way down, they're not grandfathered in under this new ordinance?
Oh, absolutely. Yes, yes, yep. It's just any further development, you'd have to come into compliance. Yeah. Um so stockpiling of snow would be illegal within twenty-five feet. Apparently, um there are some places where snow storage, winter snow removal is actually done near water bodies and that obviously has potential to introduce contaminants. Application fertilizer herbicides and then paved parking areas would not be allowed within twenty-five feet of a water body. So, we right now have a land use permit for, it's sort of voluntary, unless you're doing some sort of small structure within seventy five feet of a water body. This would require all ground disturbing activities. So this would be mechanized land clearing. So if you're bringing in a dozer or an excavator and changing the contours of your land and tearing up the the ground near within seventy five feet of water body, it would require review by the borough. It would ensure that those general standards that I just went over were complied with and then would have a cap of impervious surface of twenty percent. So you could only pave twenty percent or have a building mixture between building and paved areas. Cannot exceed a fifth of the property within that seventy five feet. I put an asterisk next to that because if you did want to add additional beyond twenty percent, then he, there is a additional standards that would apply to you that you could go beyond that. So, this does, this this draft ordinance does allow homes to be built up to forty five feet. So between forty five and seventy five feet of lakes, not rivers, but only standing water like lakes, there would be a permit process you could go through to build closer. For most of the time that the Water Body Setback Board was operating, they were only having this apply to homes that were built between nineteen eighty seven and present and really wanted to maintain the seventy five foot setback going forward. And then Nick's office stepped in and said, there there might be an equal protection issue associated with that. And well, that there definitely is an equal protection issue associated with that. And so the board voted narrowly to have this permit allowance, allowing you to go within seventy five feet, apply prospectively as well. So not just for people who are built in the past, but people who want to build in the future can build up to forty five feet with a permit. So they'd have to, they'd have to get a land use permit and they'd have to hire an engineer or qualified professional, potentially landscape architect could do this. They would have to identify current and proposed drainage patterns. They'd have to develop runoff pollution mitigation measures. If there's wetlands on the property, they'd have to maintain the function of that wetland. And and the landowner would be responsible for maintenance of the mitigation measures. And there's quite a bit of technical details associated with the runoff pollution mitigation measures. I will say that it it involves swales, involves maintaining some riparian buffer. In a lot of cases, if you have vegetation along the shore, it probably will be sufficient to actually infiltrate all the water. And there may not be a whole lot that has to be done, but it would have to be overseen by a professional, whether they're an engineer or landscape architect. We keep going.
Assembly person phone off.
Yeah.
Go back to the previous slide, please. On the, the all ground disturbing activities. If somebody had a old tree that stump needed to be moved out, that is a ground disturbing activity, is that correct? Like a beetle killer, something like that, and you want to pull the stump.
So removal of trees would not be. Now, if you were to bring in like an excavator to to pull that out, I can see.
Yeah, when you have to remove a stump, you usually use some kind of equipment.
Yeah, I I believe that's where it draws the line. If if you are using some equipment that disturbs like more than just a superficial layer, the the vegetation and the, so like lawnmowers and chainsaws and things like that would not be included. But if you're bringing in a dozer or a excavator, then yes, you would have to get a permit.
Or pickup truck and you change, try to pull the stump out, that it is disturbing technically.
I don't think a pickup truck would qualify. There was, there was dynamite. It does not specifically mention dynamite, but it, there was a lot of thought put into that. And really where they drew line line was when you're bringing in earth moving machinery. That requires a permit. Yeah. Now, I would say that if, yeah, no, that's, it's a good question. I can pull up the actual definition in in the proposed ordinance if if that.
No, no need. Thank you.
Okay. So this is an updated version of this water body setback diagram that shows which structures are legal or illegal and it has, if you can see that if you're between forty five feet and seventy five feet and you're built between either before nineteen seventy three or before May of nineteen eighty seven, you'd be grandfathered, just like you are right now. However, you would have the ability to become truly legal or even expand your your properties if you were to go through this land use permit process. And then in in the future, anything within outside of forty five feet would be legal as long as they go through a process between forty five and seventy five. This does change our variance requirements that essentially says that you cannot get a variance if you if you're proposing to go within forty five feet of a water body. So right now, there are like five standards that apply to variances. And so if you have a very unique or unusual lot, because a lot of times what you'll see is on like Big Lake, for instance, you'll see a quarter acre lot because it was developed before the forty thousand square foot requirement, sandwiched between a lake and a right of way. There may be no room on that lot to actually comply with the law. And so it can't, so there's standards that are actually set by state law that we have to review when looking at these things. But we, as as long as you're proposing a use commonly enjoyed by others. So if everybody else has a small little cabin, we're going to let you build a small little cabin. If everybody else has a big McMansion, we'll let you build a big, big McMansion. This would say, you, those rules still apply, but within forty five feet, you cannot get a variance, period. So there may be some properties out there that become because they're skinny or sandwiched between two different things, topography, things like that, that would be sort of undevelopable for for say like a residential home because of this forty five foot rule requirement. And then so there'd be no need for variances along lakes because between zero and forty five is completely, there's no variance, there's no, you're not allowed to build there. Between forty five and seventy five, you can do it through a permit. And then everything outside of seventy five feet is completely legal. So. Is that crystal clear? Okay. And then they did recommend enhanced enforcement. So they thought, so because we have this, if if this gets adopted as recommended, there would be this land use permit for for doing land clearing along water bodies that if we had somebody patrolling lakes, that we would be able to have sort of an early detection system and see when people are actually clearing their lot, that we could then educate them and get code enforcement involved to say, hey, there's actually this pro- this permit process for for building along water bodies. And then in in the resolution they adopted, they also recommended a habitat protection tax incentive, which is something, oh, we have a question.
Okay, Deputy Mayor.
Can you expand a little bit more on that? The, what what are you guys thinking? Are you, what kind of staff, what kind of cost?
Have you guys already started shopping for your wake boat? Is this question?
I want this job. I really want this job. So, so they did go down that road and say, well, they need two people, they need this, they need that. And then they kind of backed off and said, you know, we're, we're not going to actually go into that level of weeds. We're just going to say that we need, we need a presence out there along these water bodies so that we can. They wanted to not perpetuate the problem into the future and 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 essentially catch development when it first happens so that we don't have a whole new wave of of people building illegally. But they did not go into details on how many people or what kind of tools they would need. Okay.
Maybe we could get some volunteers from the community?
That's kind of where we're at right now. Right now, that's how we generally find out about code violations is neighbors telling on neighbors.
Gotcha.
Yeah.
If I can, Commissioner Cone, one of the things that really was so hard through this hours, year and a half worth of committee work, which it was very daunting, a lot of work, was the fact that had we had enforcement before, we wouldn't be in the place we are now. So that's why it really became such a big issue of, we had to at least add that to. I mean, if we want this fixed, there's going to have to be some kind of enforcement. So that was really, I I think Alex, you agree with that, that kind of sum up it. It goes with any kind of regulation.
Okay. And and finally, in in the resolution they passed, they recommend that the assembly explore a habitat protection tax incentive. This is something that there's a provision in state law that allows the local municipality to provide a tax incentive to do improvements around your lake that that help water quality. So essentially, if you go through this process of developing a swale or or modifying your property to comply with the land use permit in there, that you could get a tax break to recoup those those funds over a three year period. And this is something that is being used by the Kenai Peninsula Borough right now. So that that was the resolution.
Commissioner Alex, is there, I'd like to know a little more about how Kenai is doing that. Is there, is it dollar for dollar up to a cap or what's their process?
Yeah, so I I don't have that information in front of me. I did, I did hop on their webpage today to look at it. It looked like, it was like, it was over a three year period that you could have a tax break. I I don't, I don't know the details though, to be honest. I really don't.
I can, I can research it. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, it's very easily Googleable. Yeah.
And is that for the people that currently are non-conforming? And then they do that and then they get a tax break because they're a criminal?
They would get a tax fake. Yeah. So, yeah, so people who were built illegally.
We know what we're gonna do.
Right. Yeah, so we didn't spend a lot of time exploring that. They just, it seemed like something worthy of exploring and and they made that recommendation. So, that is the ordinance and recommendations in a nutshell. Commissioner Fernandez.
Well, I think on behalf of myself as well, the rest of the assembly, probably Planning Commission also thing, be sure and thank them. I know you're going to have a meeting tomorrow night, I guess, but be sure and thank them because I know there were lots of considerations and for their time. Chairman.
Yeah, I I did want to say what the, I want to go back to the tax incentive thing because anything we can do to help prevent this coming up in the future, that's all that we were looking for, is any kind of incentive. I don't know if it's a tax incentive. I don't know if it's a give them a sign that they could put in their yard that they were the greatest neighbors ever on the lake, whatever. Yeah, exactly. But, you know, more of just, you know, promote good behavior, right? So that's really the thought process. And it it was really an interesting committee. I tried really hard to get one of our other commissioners on it and it didn't happen. So I took it for the team, kind of. Anyway, there was a lot of consideration. We, there wasn't, and I think Alex would agree. The people that are on there really care about the water, care about the lake, care, lakes, care about the fish, care about the people wanting to get their homes to have a mortgage. They really cared deeply. And they took all of them into consideration on this committee. It was not a, let's just find something quick that we can put through. That's why we extended another six months. And it's not something to look at, you know, hey, we want to force people to do everything right. No, the purpose of a setback is to protect the water. And so that was really what we were looking at is how do, why do we even have a setback? Do we need one? Because we did look at that. Why don't we get rid of it? If it's going to be the easy thing, because that wouldn't, let's just repeal the whole thing and be done with it, right? But we didn't go that route. We went deeper and looked at what was going to be the best way. So that was, I believe I could speak for the board even in saying that that was the majority of what the board was doing. So I hope you really look at it and look at the detail, ask the questions because there was a lot of work put into it.
Assembly person hours, go ahead.
Thank you for taking one for the team. I guess I'm old enough to remember being told stories of rivers catching on fire. And I know lakes were in more populated areas. They have those horrible signs that say, don't eat more than two of these fish a week, which makes you kind of not want to even eat the fish. So it's really hard once the water's polluted to get it back, even if they've been doing, and that's the lake I'm thinking of is Lake Washington. They've been working for years to, you know, reverse the pollution that happened. So just to kind of like, why do we care about this at all? Like, it's nice to have clean water, but it's so nice to be able to eat the fish. And particularly when you think about Big Lake, it comes back to our spawning salmon and and keeping those there too. So my question was on how we measure our success. So I know the borough used to have a water quality monitoring program. We had volunteers at multiple lakes that were taking samples for us. We got rid of that. This predates me. Got rid of the person at the borough that coordinated that program, which is a little bit of a shame because it it leveraged a lot of volunteers who went out and we got, I did it. We were trained and then reported those results. So just on how we measure how our water quality is doing, was there much discussion about what, if any, testing is being done and who's doing it? And whether we do more of it to highlight or not highlight, but to, as a safeguard, like are we doing it right and and maybe notify us before problems get so bad, you, you're in a real bad situation.
Deputy Mayor.
I think that, you know, that sounds like a really good project for our high school science classes to go around and do some water samples. You know?
Well, we have a meeting come up with the school board two weeks from tonight, so somebody may want to present that idea. Any further questions?
Hoping to get kind of an answer if that was discussed, like what level we have right now and what it, was there any discussion of having a way to measure if we're keeping these water bodies clean?
So I don't recall, there there's a lot, there was many, many meetings and a lot of discussions. I probably did, I I don't know for certain, but I likely informed them that we used to have a water quality monitoring program that is no longer. I believe it is the D E C that is really the sole agency that does water quality testing that I know of. But I don't know to what extent that was communicated or talked about during the working groups.
We did discuss it and went through the information because it was news, I mean, it was new information for me. So we we did go through it, but it wasn't something that we felt like we could put into this because we were already trying to solve multiple problems. And so adding that would have been one more thing. But it's definitely something that would be a great advance to what we have currently, right? Because D E C is checking it, D E C is doing the parts of it, but the the other, we're not having, the infractions are not being dealt with. You know, there's, there's still, so if you can't deal with the infractions, then you have to find an enforcement to keep the infractions from happening, right? And so that was what the whole regulation part of it coming into was to help try to minimize the infractions.
Yes, go ahead, sir.
I have one question, Kurt Skoggin. And and I just, you guys done a lot of work, it sounds like on this, and I don't want to, but it seemed like it was more focused on lakes. The term water bodies concerns me because that could be a spring, it could be a creek of of any size, a river. And I don't think the agriculture side of this was addressed. What about the livestock? Water and livestock, you know, and you're talking about keeping them fenced away. I don't, I don't, I just, I think it, I want to more like maybe lakes instead of water bodies. I, I don't know, but I just think, I don't think there was much research done on that. And I'm not, like I say, I know you guys put a lot of time in this. I'm not trying to say, I'm not trying to ditch anybody's plan here, but there's, water bodies means a lot. And you're obviously focused on the lakes, you guys, and that's fine. That's where you're, the core, what you got, you guys got started was the buildings that were too close, but you guys have added some other stuff on. the core, what you guys got started was like buildings that were too close, but you guys have added some other stuff on there that I don't think they were really looked at, how they might affect other people in other types of water bodies and agriculture is a big one. Livestock, not so much here, but it could be one day. We got a meat processing plant that struggles and can't water cows, you got problems too. So anyway, they're just little things, but I just, that was one that just kind of glared a little bit to me.
So, Mayor, I will say there was actually a lot of that type of discussion. We were talking about duck ponds and there was a lot of discussion about the repercussions of these or of these, of these restrictions. Whether or not they came up with the right answer, I can tell you there was a lot of thoughtful discussion.
And Alex, did we not define what the water body size would be for the regulation? As far as there was, had to be so many acres and, I mean, it was not, it's not just limited to water. I mean, it's a lake, it's going to be a lake that this is going to be dealt with.
So there is, there is a carve out for smaller lakes under a single ownership. There, there was an attempt to have, you know, exempt streams that are no more than two feet and wide, but that did not pass. But there is, there is these types of things that were discussed and voted on.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes, go ahead.
I would just say about the DEC question and testing the water, it's pretty hard to quantify the effect of the policy for land use when there's other things that contribute to pollutants in the water, such as airplanes, snow machines in the winter, boats, boat motors. I mean, how do you quantify what kind of an effect changing the regulations on a piece of property does?
So without a baseline, I agree, that would be extremely difficult thing to do. If we'd been monitoring water this whole time and then adopted new regulations, then we'd be able to recognize trends, but without a baseline, I think that'd be extremely difficult.
Further, yes, Assemblyperson Farno, go ahead.
Alex, did you say that there was a discussion to exempt twenty four inch stream or water from, you know, melting snow and things like that and didn't even seasonal, you know, after heavy rain or something like that, that so it would now be considered a water body, no?
No, so right now ephemeral streams are not considered a water body. So our definition of what a water body is, I think it it contemplates like that the principal growing medium and the organisms that live there are primarily aquatic in nature. So if you have spring melt and there's always water here in the spring and maybe in the fall, it's likely not going to be wet long enough that that aquatic organisms live there. Okay, thank you.
Further questions of Alex before we let him go? Yes, Assemblyperson Sumner, go ahead.
So, I mean, I mean, this just occurred to me, but like, so like the manmade lake over at the gravel pit by the hospital, does that qualify?
I'd have to look at it, but but generally speaking, even right now, if somebody were to build a lake, then it would be a lake and all of a sudden it's regulated. The state of Alaska has jurisdiction over it and there's water body setbacks associated with it. This does have a carve out, though. If you build a lake and you own the whole thing around that lake, you're not subject to the setbacks.
Any further questions before we let him go? Okay, I guess that's it. Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay.
Okay, the next item on our agenda is comments from Planning Commission and Assembly and Chairman, do you want to go ahead and ask your Assembly people? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, you have another item?
Well, there is another item on the agenda, yes.
Oh, yeah, to report, you're absolutely right. Is there a report on Planning Commissions to communicate to the Assembly legislative matters? We don't have enough on our plate. Do you want some more?
I don't think this has to take a whole lot of time.
Anyway, but go ahead, sir. Thank you for catching that.
So, so this is a matter that was, I think there was several comments made at a recent meeting. I don't even remember which legislation it was, but there was some legislation that was reviewed by the Planning Commission. And then it went to the Assembly and there was no adopted resolution. And I sort of, I think everybody who's on the Planning Commission has heard my spiel several times now that the way the Planning Commission communicates to the Assembly is through resolution. There are some times where the Planning Commission doesn't, so we will always make a resolution in support of something. If there's some piece of legislation, staff will make a resolution saying Planning Commission supports this, this resolution of this ordinance. And so what has happened is the Planning Commission has failed the resolution because they don't support whatever is before them. And then they actually don't do the next further step of adopting a resolution saying why they don't support it. And so there were some comments made at the last assembly meeting. So Mike Brown and I talked about it and said, well, let's, since, since we're meeting, there's a joint meeting, let's talk about it. And what are the expectations of the the Assembly from the Planning Commission on these matters?
I've definitely thought about this because I do watch the Planning Commission meetings and I've been really impressed with the the thoughtfulness and the review that you've given the things that we've sent you, whether that's marijuana, onsite consumption or gravel pits or multifamily development, mobile home parks. Maybe you should ask for less from us, but and I don't know if you torture yourselves and watch our meetings, but the, there's been a number of times where I have heard at this dais, well, I wonder why, what there was, why they failed that? You know, and and then I've heard it at the Planning Commission too, like, oh, don't really understand why the person proposed this and so I'm always trying to think, well, you know, how can we make that better? And I, I've, I've thought from the Assembly end, if we had like a one page, something we could ask staff to produce, or you just answer simple questions. When you're sending it to the Planning Commission says, what's the problem you're trying to solve? How does this solve it? And is there any specific input I'd like from the Planning Commission? And then the reverse form would say, you know, whether you failed it or not, what concerns you had about it? Any remaining questions you have? I mean, just really simple, right? Because we communicate all this in this weird resolution form, whereas, where, nobody talks like that. And I think the resolutions are good, but I also think if there was a one page set of questions attached to it, it'd be a real quick way to communicate back and forth. And I also think it would help continuity between assemblies and planning commission because you get new people on and they don't know what the expectation is. And if you're answering boom, 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 these questions, like whoever steps into my seat or steps into your seats, like, oh, okay, this is at least the baseline of what to answer. So I'd like to see if there'd be support at this body for asking staff to produce something like that, that just real simple, like three or four questions that get attached to whatever we send to you and whatever you send back to us.
Further discussion by the Assembly or the Planning Commission? Any other situation?
Yeah, I think something like that could be really useful. We're really grateful for the staff because they help us try to answer those questions already. But I think sometimes if it came from the actual originator of whatever it is that's come our way, it would be even more helpful. Anything to help us figure out the whys, right?
Kind of a checklist.
Yeah.
Were there discussions on this subject or any other subject that you? Okay, I guess then that's, that's it, sir. Okay. So now, Madam Chairman, if you want to get parting comments from your members, please?
Sure. We'll go ahead and start with Commissioner Allen.
Thank you for a great meeting. I enjoyed both the presentations and I appreciate all the hard work that obviously went into both of them. I also wanted to take this opportunity to acknowledge that the Valley Thunder eighteen U double A hockey team, our very own Valley Thunder hockey team, just won the state championship on Monday against the South Anchorage Oilers. So that's always something to be proud of. So way to go, boys.
You just honored the other hockey team last week.
Big things.
Yeah, yeah.
Awesome. Commissioner McCabe? Just thanks to all the Assembly for welcoming us to your meeting tonight and making space for us on the dais. Thanks for the staff for all your preparation and thanks to the Water Body Setback Committee that spent so many hours working on the recommendation. I'm sure it will provide a very lively discussion on the eighteenth at the Assembly meeting. Thank you.
Commissioner Fernandez?
Rubba dub dub, thanks for the grub. Yegon.
Commissioner Skoggins?
I'm going to go with a no comment. I digest the last one.
And for my comments, just thank you very much for having us here. It's always good to get together and be able to work on things together. Appreciate it.
Okay, for the Assembly, Assemblyperson Hale, are you still available, sir? Parting comments?
Yeah, no, no comment, Madam Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor, parting comments? Put your mic on, please. Thank you.
Thank you, everybody, for coming out. Good meeting. Thank you for all your hard work at the water backs setback. Yeah. You guys did great. I wanted to thank the Lord. Thank you for your love, your forgiveness, your grace. Thank you for all your blessings. Thank you for your first responders, our military. Please help our veterans. Please give our leaders and teachers wisdom. Please help the lost, the sick, the downtrodden, the addicted. Please come and homestead our hearts and minds. Build the valley with your love. Jesus name, amen.
Parting comments, Assemblyperson hours?
No comments.
Okay, parting comments, Assemblyperson Sumner?
Oh, yeah, I'd just like to say I'm I'm excited about the corridor area management plan or corridor access management plan for Borghardt. I mean, it's, it's well, it's probably overdue and it's, it's needed. I do like to see that there is some partnership between the private industry developers like you heard about, you know, I mean, without, without an access management plan, a guiding document of this, then, you know, those parcels or developers would have no, no guidance on what to do and they would willy nilly be throwing houses in the way of what we need to later on, you know, purchase or move roads and realign things. So it's exciting to see that, you know, private and public partnership happening. I also want to say as far as the Water Body Setback Committee, thanks a lot for the hard work. It's always easier to criticize someone else's work product than it is to produce your own. I criticize it, I will later on on March eighteenth. So don't take that, don't take that personally, please. I do appreciate all the hard work. And I was actually, I would, just for the record, I would not be voting to buy a wake boat for the borough.
Assemblyperson Gamble, parting comments?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to reserve my comments about the waterfront setback document until it comes forward. Big Lake is in my district and believe me, the last four months, the majority of phone calls I've taken have been about this document. I've tried to direct as many as I could to Commissioner McCabe. I don't know how many of those you got. And I also have several restaurants on lakes in my district as well. So that's, that's a a big issue too about the industrial and the business part of that. Also, I know Borghardt's not in my district, but I would caution the suicide lane construction of roads and they call them suicide lanes for a reason. And I think some of the worst accidents I've seen in the borough in Wasilla have been in that middle lane over the years in my travels through Wasilla. So I know it sounds like an easy, less expensive fix, but I think over the long run, it may be a bigger problem than it solves. And lastly, to Assemblymember Bernier, I would caution you about using the word dynamite because you know, I'm going to get phone calls that say Assemblymember Bernier said it was okay to use dynamite. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Assemblyperson Farno, parting comments?
Thank you to everyone. I still gonna want to see more options when it comes to the what's in front of us and how we could, what's cost effective because there is wish list and there's reality list. And I think we live in based on how we manage the money and we debate whether one position has to be a full time or part time, we can really, we really can debate that. But then looking at some of the ideas that are multimillion dollars is just, we got to stay in reality and what we can do in the short term to improve. And we're in different area, you'd call that whatever you call that lane, I would say that potentially we could prevent a lot of traffic and accidents in my area. Thank you.
Mr. Attorney, parting comments? No, Madam Clerk, parting comments? Okay. And so we will adjourn at eight forty.